Good afternoon. The time is now four thirty-five P M. And welcome to the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. I am Pamela Boozer-Struther, Committee Chair. And I welcome, and also the District Three Board of Education member. And it brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to today's meeting, and I look forward to our work together this school year. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PG CPS YouTube channel for later viewing. The agenda and documents can be found on the PG CPS Diligent page linked from the Board of Education homepage. I thank all of you for committing to this important oversight and partnership work. Ms. McMillan, please call the roll.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Present.
Donald Bell?
Present.
Kate Wonderlich?
Present.
Joseph Jakuta? Christina Kuak? Timothy Meyer?
Present.
Dorothy Morrison? David Noda?
Present.
Beth Novick?
Present.
Ramon Palencia-Caval? Antoine Thompson? James Roberson?
Present.
James Dubon Garcia? Maya Gudera? Olivia Thomas?
Present.
Sophia Villar? Mikal Witherspoon?
Present.
There are nine members present.
Thank you all so much. We have a quorum, and with a quorum present, the Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee will come to order. Before we move forward with the agenda, I would like to take a moment for our special guests to introduce themselves. We have a very exciting agenda, and I'd like to acknowledge the many guests that have joined us today. And I'm going to ask James Roberson to assist in these introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Struther. I'm going to start with our external partners. So I'm going to begin with YCI, and I'm going to send it your way.
Great. Good evening. My name is Anne Strozick. I'm the Director of Outreach for the Youth Climate Institute. Thanks for having me tonight.
And do you have any additional presenters that'll be speaking on behalf of YCI?
We do have two students from Bowie High School, Kira and Glenda, who will be assisting and co-presenting with me tonight.
Kara and Glenda, if you want to introduce yourselves, you're welcome to do that now.
Hello, my name is Glenda. I am in twelfth grade, and I am the president of our school's YCI chapter.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kira. I'm sorry I'm in the car right now, but I'm the secretary of our school's YCI chapter.
Thank you. All right, next we'll go to EcoAmerica. I'm going to send it over to Brett.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Brett Matoulis. I am the Communities Program Director at EcoAmerica, and I'm very glad to join you this evening.
Brett, I believe you're flying solo, but just to double check.
I am just me tonight.
Okay, thank you. And next to our internal partners, I'm going to send it over to Regina and CTE.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Dr. Regina Spruill. I'm a supervisor in Prince George's County Public Schools Korean Technical Education Department, also known as CTE. I supervise our environmental studies, which includes animal science and natural resources, and also supervise our auto technology programs and interactive media production. I actually serve on the Climate Change and Social Justice Committee.
And next, I'm going to send it over to Van from the H B Owen Science Center.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Van Ross. I'm the Program Administrator and Supervisor at the Howard B. Owen Science Center.
I believe that is everyone that's presenting tonight. If I did miss someone, please let us know now.
Yeah, I see Director Matt Luck and Alston are both here from their divisions. They would like to say hello as well before their presentation.
Good evening, Board Member Boozer-Struther, and all pleasure to be here this evening. I am Jamie Alston from the Division of Supporting Services, also Sustainability and Resiliency. And I serve with utilities, energy, solar, E V chargers, and L E D lighting.
Hi, Director Matt Luck from the Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development. And I'm probably going to be here just to discuss something about our transportation issues, so.
Well, great. Thank you all for joining us. We look forward to hearing all about your work and/or your reports on behalf of the Office of Sustainability. Moving on to the agenda, the adoption of the meeting agenda. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda. Hearing no objections, the agenda is adopted. Moving on to one point four, approval of the meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. Not seeing any hands or hearing objections, the minutes are approved. Two point oh presentations. There are six items for discussion this evening. After each item, we will limit each member's questions and feedback to two point five minutes per round unless a motion is taken for additional rounds. There will be two rounds per agenda item. Two point one, Director of Sustainability Report. The chair recognizes Director Morrison for the Sustainability Report. Thank you. Unmute.
I'm so sorry. I had my mic on mute. I was just saying, thank you, Board Member Boozer-Struther, and I will now project a couple of slides. Now, I'm not sure. Can everyone see the slides? I'm trying to see if I can make it bigger. You can see it? Okay, perfect. All right, so let's get started.
Director Morrison just needs to be in presentation mode, if you have presentation mode.
Oh, you know, the slideshow, I'm sorry. Okay, so let's get started. So what I wanted to sort of kick off with was just to let you all know that we will be having our Sustainability and Climate Leadership Summit. It's in May, and I know it sounds like it's way off, but we're starting the planning process now. And we would very much like to have the members of this committee be part of that planning, so meaning, or at least help us with the content. So looking for members of the Ad Hoc Committee to provide, you know, any input that they would like. And I have Kimberly, my executive assistant's email on the presentation, so feel free to contact her if you have an interest in helping to craft that event. The second item here is an E V policy that we're working on, and this is a policy for both internal and external users' policy. Again, we would like to ask input from this committee as we move on with developing a policy review committee for E V charging. And as you know, some parents have expressed concern about potentially having E V chargers on school grounds and having unknown folks charging when the kids are around, so we have to really develop a policy, so we address all of that. With regards to solar installation, I believe Board Member Boozer-Struther had sent out an email saying that she was noticing activities on these schools, and yes, that is happening. We are in the process of installing the solar framing, and if folks have questions on that, in the end, we have Jamie here and also Director Matt Luck who could go into more details with that. Oops, I'm sorry. And I also wanted folks to be aware that through a partnership with the Prince George's County Department of Environment, we are considering Colin Powell Academy as being a pilot, South County, I guess, resiliency hub. Currently, the Hyattsville Library is the North County Resiliency Hub, and we were approached by the Maryland, I'm sorry, Prince George's County Department of Environment to see if we could use one of our school sites for the South County pilot. So more to come on that, but I just wanted folks to be aware that this is going on. And these will not necessarily be shelters per se, so there would not be hubs that would house folks overnight, but there will be places where one could go if there's an extreme weather event and folks need to have supplies, whether it's diapers, food, what have you. And on an ongoing basis, the resiliency hub will serve as a place where the community as well as students can go for climate change education and resources all year round. Okay, so item number five, I'm going to just put a pause on that because Director Matt Luck will be giving us a brief explanation of why we have had to sort of, I guess, cancel that project because the numbers weren't adding up, but he will go into more details with that. F Y I, we do have an administrative procedure that we just developed for food waste reduction, and we are in the process of developing various administrative procedures to help us implement the various climate action plans. So F Y I, it's there. And again, these links are all live and active, so feel free to go in and, you know, get information. I also wanted to share that I was on the Maryland Commission on Environmental Justice and Sustainable Communities Meeting yesterday and learned that they have, I guess it's a different version of the Maryland Enviro screen, where they have now added a climate vulnerability score to that tool. So there's a link here as well to take you there if you all want to sort of, you know, peruse around and see what areas in the counties are considered to have climate vulnerability, so. And the last item here is just a link to the most recent end-of-year climate action plan report. We do this, I guess, once a year, but then we have like a media report, which is kind of a truncated version of this, but the full report can be seen here. Again, the links are live and active. So that is pretty much it for the update. Now, tonight, we will be focusing on the climate curriculum training and partnerships. That's a priority area one of the climate action plan, and we have James Roberson and Donald Bell would be leading that effort. But before we go to that, I'd like to invite Director Matt Luck just to give us a little update on the status of the microgrid project at Bowie-Mulliken Bus Lot. Go ahead, Director Matt Luck.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening.
Do you need to share anything? I'm going to stop sharing so you can, if you have anything.
I don't need to share anything. So to be, to be straightforward about what's going on, as you know, we had planned for quite some time to develop a microgrid project at the Mulliken Bus Lot. It was, we were moving towards getting a concluded agreement. And we had gone into the, to the board, let me start over. We originally estimated that we would, we would use roughly about a million dollars in savings that we would make off of diesel, not buying diesel, and use that million dollars to fund the cost of the microgrid. Basically, it serves as an ongoing payment on the microgrid that would then charge the buses. When we, and that was based on analysis that was provided by our experts over at J L L, our consultants, and information that we had from transportation. When we went to the board to get approval for the, to move forward with this project, we also gave, we figured there'd be a cost of expansion. So we put down, so we requested approval up to one point five million dollars annually for the payments towards the microgrid. And we felt that that was fair for roughly about ninety buses. And then on top of that, we went to the county council to get approval for a, a, what's called a payment in lieu of taxes, which would have been a, would reduce the property taxes on the infrastructure that would have been owned by the developer. And then we also went and got a grant for roughly about two million dollars from the, from M E A, the State Department of, of, of Environment. Well, so we got all that in place, and we kept having difficulties trying to finalize our contract. We were working through it, working through it. We kept redesigning, 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 and then the election came. And all of the subsidies for the electric buses sort of dissipated. So we originally had planned on purchasing ninety buses over the course of three years, and that would have fueled the microgrid, basically. And so that, those diesel offsets were for ninety buses. When we got down to it and we realized where we were, we said, well, we're not going to get ninety buses. So we said, let's try and go with, you know, fifty, forty-five to fifty buses. Basically, a little bit around half. I raised all this leadership. We all agreed that this was the right move. We went back to the developer and said, look, we know how difficult this is. We know that the subsidies are in jeopardy. So we're going to make this microgrid smaller, and then later on, if we can expand again, we'll expand at Greenbelt. And everybody agreed to do that. And they still hadn't, weren't able to give us the numbers, which was a little troubling. And then finally, they came back with a number, and that number was two point zero one eight million dollars annually, which is double what we originally had anticipated for ninety buses, and now we're down to forty-five buses. And it was then more than what we could afford. So I met with their CEO of the company that was working on this, and we went back and forth to try and get an agreement on what the facts are, what they're using for their basis and numbers. And I was also running the finances myself, based on what we had financed before on other projects, given current, current market conditions. So finally, we met again in Tennessee. I was down there for a conference. We were receiving an award for Phase Two, and I was down there and I had arranged to meet with him, and we would go over the numbers again. And what, what we determined is that I knew that we could probably finance the infrastructure that they were talking about for roughly around four hundred thousand dollars a year. So I'm trying to figure out where the other one point six was coming from. We went back and forth about it, and I realized that the issue was their financial structure. That their financial structure was such that they were, they were equity-heavy, and the rate of return on equity forced their number up. And as a result, they couldn't really pencil out at the rate that we could pencil out on a loan. Okay, so we talked about potentially splitting the cost of the capital where we would pay, because taking the capital completely out then took all their profit out, and then that didn't make sense for them either. So I said, well, maybe we can split the cost of capital. I went back, we redid the numbers. They went back and redid their numbers in a way that they wanted to split capital and the way we wanted to split capital. We would have still not come out, we would come out somewhere around one point six. That's the number they came back to us with. That still wasn't good enough, because again, we're not offsetting the diesel cost. In that case, we're going above the diesel cost, and we have, that we would have for forty-five buses. So if you'd had basically one point five for, for, for ninety buses, we're talking somewhere. Market for us was somewhere between four fifty and seven fifty for forty-five buses. So I said, well, we can't make that work. And I went back to our leadership and I said, well, these are the numbers. We have basically three alternatives. Alternative one is we could keep moving ahead with the project, but I don't know where we'd get the money to pay for the bus, the microgrid, because it won't pencil out for us based on the numbers that we originally used and the source of revenue that we were going to use. Two, we could try and go back to them with a counter offer to try and take on more of the cost of the, of the capital, but I still don't think it's going to pencil, because right now with their numbers, it's one point six. And I think anything that below that probably doesn't work out for their profit. And I said, though, the thing, we can cancel a project and then move forward with just charging infrastructure, strike the microgrid, and put the charging infrastructure at a couple of other locations that might work better from a usage standpoint, because originally, the reason why we were using the Mulliken was because we were redoing that site, and it made sense. There was a cost savings to, including that, that construction with the build-out of the new, of the new bus lot there. But if we were to do the charging, simply to do the charging, we probably would, and we probably would be better off putting it at Greenbelt and/or Crossland or both. So leadership decided that it would be more cost beneficial, and so did our consultant, that we would go back and just do charging infrastructure. And so what we're going to do is we've already walked the bus lots, and we are now, we're going to put out an R F P to get proposals to put charging infrastructure, but no, no solar, but just the charging infrastructure at both Greenbelt and Crossland. And we'll roughly be around, we're thinking like fifteen chargers at each location, and that'll give us enough to expand out if we want to grow a little bit. In addition to that, we are now, there were some, the cost of the, of the electric buses is currently about three times the cost of a diesel bus, which, and we have to replace a hundred buses a year. So from a cash standpoint, our budget doesn't work very well for electric buses. However, next month, Dorothy, Director Morrison, Director Baldwin, and myself, and a few of our other people, we're going to go down to Newport News, Virginia, to look at a propane bus lot. And that, the cost of those propane buses are more in line with affordability for us and maybe the methodology that we move with in the future at our other bus lots with the goal of, you know, reducing emissions and that sort of thing, and making, and building a more sustainable bus program, until at least maybe the buses for electric buses drops to something that we can reasonably afford. And so that's the direction that we're looking at at the moment, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you so much, Director Matt Luck. Director Morrison, does that conclude the report? We could open to questions on the entire report?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Director Matt Luck.
Great. So if anyone would like to raise, raise their Zoom hand to let me know if they have a question? On any, any aspect of the report. I'm not, not seeing any, any go off, so I'll just, oh, there's Ms. Novick.
Have to, first of all, Director Matt Luck, that was fascinating and really interweaves a lot of what you hear in the news, how it implicates us at the ground level. So thank you for that very detailed report. I have one question, and I didn't take a big note of it, but I had talked to you, Pamela, earlier about the food survey, and so I'm wondering if that administrative procedure zero one 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 can be a lot, with that reduction of food waste, could possibly be aligned with the students' interest in a food survey so that less food is thrown away and more is eaten?
So, Ms. Novick, I'm sorry. So are you asking if that can be incorporated into the administrative procedure?
No, I'm just asking if we could use that administrative procedure as sort of a launchpad for reasoning of why the students might do a survey to find out why their peers are throwing all the food away instead of eating it, which is what they said last year. And Mary.
I see no reason why.
I reached out to Mary Kirkland, and she said that they didn't have time to finish that project up last year, which she originally had started talking to James Dubon Garcia and Olivia about, and Michael as part of the team, but that was going to get, put that together this year. So I just wanted to know, it's like the umbrella under which they could move forward.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely a possibility, and I see James's hand up, but I do know that, I believe it's the Office of Strategic Planning. They also do these like climate surveys as well, and I know last year they had included a survey that, you know, asked the students what types of foods they liked, and I've actually put them in contact with Director Kirkland so that she's not reinventing the wheel. She can build off of that survey that was done. So I would just definitely just send a reminder to Director Kirkland about that as well.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Novick and Director Morrison for coordinating, and, and I would, I would say absolutely any assistance that I could give, and, and all that coordination I'm happy to do as well. Mr. Roberson?
Thank you. My question's for Director Matt Luck. Director Matt Luck, are the electric buses currently in the fleet? Are they operating this school year? And if the answer is yes to that question, do you know which schools they are servicing? And the reason for my question is that could support some of our schools with their Maryland Green School application.
I don't know if they're in use. I know we have been using the remote chargers for buses. So I, I can't, I don't have an answer for that. That's, that would be Director Baldwin. I don't know.
Yeah, and let me follow up. That word, I'm sorry. Okay, you can, you can do now. It's mine. Okay. I was just saying, I think my, because of the charging issue with all the buses, that were kind of, I was checking what the business over there. But we can, we can.
Director Morrison, unfortunately, your sound was going out, but it sounded like, it sounded like there definitely needs to be a follow-up with Director Kiba Baldwin, Director of Transportation, to get clarity on how we're utilizing the electric buses we have, given the, the, the sort of fluctuating circumstances around charging them. So not seeing any other hands, I just wanted to add to this discussion, you know, that the electric bus transition commitment through two thousand and forty is, it remains strong. We do, you know, we do expect that the, as, you know, as a board member, someone in policy, and, you know, working in the, the sphere of advocating to state and federal government, we will continue to do that along with the Maryland Association of Boards of Education that have made this a priority for the state of Maryland. So we have the twenty-three other school districts as, as partners, and we, you know, the, the vision is still there, but this transition in the federal commitment is impacting. this transition in the federal commitment is impacting all of us. So we're in it, in it together and the momentum is still there at the state level. So are there any other questions related to the director's report? Okay, not seeing any other hands. Um, I'm excited to move to our next segment here. I think it is so appropriate that we're starting the year with uh, priority area number one, support environmental justice through climate curriculum, training and partnerships, uh, focus on our student learning and our educators and our curriculum developers and our external partners. Um, the um, um, I, we do have multiple presentations and I think we can pause for questions in between each of them. I'm going to have the chair, I'm going to recognize Chair Morrison um, to introduce the team that will lead us through this, um, which I know will include uh, James Roberson, um, who I would like to take a, a moment of privilege here to announce his recognition uh, yesterday by the State Board of Education at the, at the State Board meeting, along with the principal of Buran Heights Elementary, Amanda Allerich, uh, they received um, the um, uh, US Green Schools Recognition uh, during a ceremony yet yesterday. Their nominees, they've done work for many years to prepare the school for this awards ceremony. The unfortunate part is that the current federal administration isn't moving forward with all the steps of this program, but the, but the earning of the recognition did happen. And so the State Board of Education thought it was important to recognize uh, the schools, including Montgomery County and Arundel County and Prince George's County that received this. And and I, it was a great honor and privilege to join uh, both Mr. Roberson and Principal Allerich as they accepted the award. Uh, so uh, with that, I will now uh, hand this over to Director Morrison to move, move us through this part of the agenda. Thank you.
All right, thanks again. So um, leading this deep dive conversation is James Robison and Donald Bell. Um, so James Robison is with the Sweet Center and um, Donald Bell is the Science Supervisor. And um, with them presenting case studies include representatives from Eco America, uh, the Youth Climate Institute. Um, and we have from supporting offices, we have the Korea Technical Education and the, and the Howard B. Owens uh, Science Center. And as these um, individuals uh, give their case study, James and or Donald will sort of introduce them. Go ahead. Uh, with that, I yield the floor to, I'm not sure who's going first, James, Donald?
Uh, I'll go for first. Thank you, Director Morrison. Um, uh, appreciate your support. Uh, James, uh, and I are are co-chairs of Priority One. Um, but we serve with a, a much broader and larger group that all work to support Priority One, which is supporting environmental justice through climate curriculum, training and partnerships. And we will present our progress from school year two thousand twenty-five and our next steps moving forward. And um, when, when we stop and think about uh, Priority One and this challenge associated um, uh, and privilege associated with climate change curriculum and environmental justice. Um, we're, we're pleased to be one of the first presentations of the year, especially on this first week back to school. Because um, and working with Board Member Boozer Struther, even on the development of the Climate Change Action Plan, there's a reason why we made this Priority One. Uh, because uh, when we think about sustainability um, in an environmental sense, of course, we want to reduce uh, our carbon footprint and greenhouse gas emissions, uh, because that has so many different co-benefits in terms of um, health and and of co- of clo- of course uh, global temperature and our regional temperature. Um, but for the efforts that we make and priorities two through eight to truly be sustainable, then we have to have an impact in Priority One. Um, and that is the information and learning uh, with our students as well as our staff. And so um, in our presentation, we'll have a Priority One overview. Um, and then go into our partner presentations and case studies with Eco America and Youth Climate Institute. And then our PG CPS Supporting Offices with Career and Technical Education and Howard B. Owens Science Center. And then uh, questions will be interspersed, but we'll, we'll also have an opportunity for questions at the end of the presentation. All right, so Priority One Overview, um, we talked about uh, this really being the heart of the Climate Change Action Plan, uh, because at the center of all of our work are students. And so this work um, i- is, it goes directly to what gets in front of our students and what are they learning when it comes to climate change? Um, and that is work uh, and learning on both the causes uh, mitigation efforts as well as adaptation and resiliency. And so within Priority One, there are six operational actions. Uh, one, Operational Action One is creating a Climate and Curriculum and Environmental Justice Work Group. And that work, uh, we're, we're sitting here speaking and working right now. But in addition to the development of the Curriculum and Environmental Justice Work Group, part of Operational Action One is how are we making training opportunities available for both our students and staff? And so you'll learn more about uh, Operation Action One as we move forward, but it includes opportunities uh, from last year where we engage both students and staff uh, to become climate ambassadors. And you'll hear more from Eco America about that as well. Um, and then Operation Action Two uh, goes into uh, launching and sustaining our climate-ready leadership summits. And there are opportunities for uh, both of our, our students uh, and staff to engage in those summits. And then Operation Action Three is associated with climate technology. How, how we uh, how we provide access to innovative climate technologies, be it both um, hands-on opportun- opportunities as well as digital platforms and dashboards where students can engage in learning and understanding climate change topics. Um, Operation Action Four uh, is connected with our career in technical education um, and incorporates green skills and job readiness. And so uh, we know that many of the careers associated with sustainability uh, and environmental work will, will uh, only increase over the next fifty years. So how are we providing opportu- opportunities connected with our workforce and job readiness? And connecting that to climate change? Operation Five is building new climate partnerships with organizations. And so you'll hear from uh, two of those organizations that we worked with over the last few years to develop uh, these new partnerships that have uh, direct benefits to our students and staff. Uh, but there are many other partnerships that we are working um, on and developing in Priority One as well. Um, and then Operation Action Six, which is incorporating climate environmental justice uh, into our curriculum and learning standards. And so you'll hear um, a, a great deal about our efforts uh, in that space. All right, so I'm diving a little deeper into Operational Action One. Um, in, in Operation Action One, again, uh, we've developed the work group. But then the work group looks at training opportunities uh, for students and staff. If we're going to incorporate climate topics into the curriculum, then it has to be part of the culture of PG CPS, which means students and staff need training and opportunities. And so uh, we've had staff and student climate ambassador trainings partnering with Eco America um, last year. Uh, we had, and you'll, you'll hear more about the statistics. I won't steal Brett's thunder. Um, but we have some pretty exciting statistics associated with the trainings that we offered um, last year. And then environmental justice training uh, in February of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we had over three hundred PG CPS staff all engaged in an environmental justice training where we heard from um, workforce partners throughout the community um, and uh, partnering with Nicole Jackson um, on, in those efforts. Um, the Maryland Climate Teaching, you'll see more about this in, on the next slide, but the Maryland Climate Teaching is part of a greater effort throughout the state of Maryland. Uh, and this work is through the Maryland Climate Commission and the Education Communit- uh, Communication Outreach Subcommittee of that state-level committee that provides this opportunity for uh, schools, organizations, communities, individuals to all get engaged in speaking and learning about climate change topics in April of each year. Uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll dive in there a little bit deeper as well. We had a climate simulation training where teachers engaged in uh, dashboard training and, and helping students to look at futures and evaluate solutions associated with climate change. And what are all of the impacts associated with um, each of the solutions that go into uh, uh, climate change mitigation and adaptation efforts? Our Climate and Stormwater Stewards Program um, has over the last two years provided opportunities. This is a partnership between Chesapeake Bay Foundation and Acacia Watershare Society and Prince George County Public Schools to provide opportunities for more than fifty trips for schools that have been fully funded and paid for to get students out um, at either a uh, uh, Prince George's Park or Chesapeake Bay Foundation site to learn more about stormwater and climate um, as part of their field experiences. And then uh, with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, we've had an opportunity for the last uh, three years to partner with them to provide climate courses uh, to our teachers at little to no cost through the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. So the image that you see here are our teachers actually out on one of those climate courses over the summer. They get out on the water. Um, many in, in most instances in those courses as part of their efforts and learning about the local environment so that they can bring the local environment and impacts into their climate change uh, curriculum and their lessons with the students. Okay, so the Maryland Climate Teaching. Um, hopefully you've heard about it, but if you haven't, now you have, and we're going to be looking forward to you participating uh, this upcoming April. The Maryland Climate Teaching is an annual event in April focused on climate change education and solutions. It brings together educators, students and community members all throughout the state to discuss this issue. Um, and so we're very appreciative of um, all of the individuals and organizations that are part of the Maryland Climate Commission that helps drive this work for the Maryland Climate Teaching. Um, the call goes out to uh, LEAs, counties, um, governments throughout the state to respond. And what this really boils down to is as an individual or an organization or a school, what will you do to engage uh, folks or students or community members in April to talk about climate change? And it could be something um, uh, uh, at like a thirty-minute conversation to an all-day event where you're hosting multiple different uh, components to it. So each organization, there's a lot of flexibility in how they do this. And so you see some different examples here where there's a tree planting and that can certainly be part of that climate conversation. Or uh, on the right, you see students developing posters to increase awareness. They all play a role and can count toward the Maryland Climate Teaching. And so on the next slide, uh, we have some really exciting results from the Climate Teaching. So if you look at the two thousand twenty-five participation, uh, this is across the state. You'll see that the concentrated areas and the highest participation areas are in, in red there. Um, and so we're alongside Barnesville School and Towson University. But Prince George's County Public School led the state in Maryland Climate Teaching participation uh, by far. We have fifty-three educators across this, um, across the county all participate in this effort, all engaged in different activities uh, at their school level. And so hats off um, to all of the uh, teachers, administrators, um, all of the central office staff that supported our Maryland Climate uh, Teaching Participation Efforts as well as um, Board Man- Board Member Boozer Struther. Uh, because I know you were promoting the Climate Teaching from your platform as well um, to get the community uh, activated and involved. So we were really excited to see these results. And I'll turn it over to James to discuss the Maryland Green School Program.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, before I get started, there's quite a bit of background noise where I am. Is, is that coming through at all? Okay, great. Uh, so we wanted to share the Maryland Green School statistics with you. I mean, it's one of our favorite slides to share at any presentation, right? We're number one in the state with the number of Maryland Green Schools. Uh, for those not familiar with the program, there's a nonprofit in the state uh, that awards the Maryland Green Ser- Green School Certification to schools across the state. And as you can see here, we lead. How that ties into our climate change work is um, this Maryland Green School Program is a gateway into schools promoting environmental literacy. And once school, what, what we've seen is once schools buy into this, um, we are starting to see more of the education, more of the objectives of the Maryland Green School kind of uh, move towards climate change education and environmental justice. That happens uh, probably more often in the middle and high schools. Um, but through this program, actions by students are required. And so we're starting to see students engage more with climate change in EJ. Uh, so we wanted to share that with you all. So under Operation Action Number Two, the Student Environmental Alliance Summit, this is going on, been going on for a number of years. Uh, I'm going to say ten plus. Uh, and so it's a two-day event. Day one this past year was at Bladensburg Waterfront Park. And that day is more action-oriented, it's outdoors, uh, the vast majority of the day. And we want students engaged in PGs or in Prince George's County um, taking action, being solution-oriented, right? And so we have the majority of our high schools participate. Uh, students that are typically in the Green Club or some kind of science club or Envirethon. Uh, those are the students that are targeted by the high schools and they bring them out um, for these two days. Day two, uh, the last couple of years has been a buoy state. It's much more conference-style. Uh, the students are going around to different workshops. They're engaged with leaders around the state and within the county on local and state issues, maybe regional issues as well. Um, and we also provide time for the students to collaborate. Uh, so we, you know, the, a lot of these students are like-minded. They want to uh, take action at their school. So we're trying to build in time uh, to teach them how to collaborate because some of them need those skills and then. Because some of them need those skills and then provide that time for them to do so. So last year, you can see that was in April, um, and we are planning uh, to do that again this year. We also have under Operation Action Two, a Leadership Summit. Uh, and this is adults only, right? So what are we doing here in PG CPS? Uh, Board Member Boozer Struther uh, has been a leader on this for a number of years. Director Morrison, your office has taken the lead on this and sets this up. Uh, I'm not going to speak much of this. Director Morrison, I can send it over to you. I, it, you can probably provide more context and detail than I can.
Did you, did you want me to provide more context now or is this question?
Yes, no, no, no. Yeah, if you just want to say a few words about the summit.
Yeah, I mean, sure. This usually ranges from anywhere from, I guess, um, fifty to a hundred participants. It's a mix of um, you know, PG CPS staff as well as other LEA staff and our various partners. And we come together and talk about, you know, climate solutions, what we could be doing better. And so, yeah, and we try to, I know this, I, I think I alluded to this earlier, my, in my um. Director's report is that we are looking for input, we're starting to look for input right now for. The session in May, next year is going to be in May, not, not in April, because we want to be part of the C's. Um, efforts. So we are sort of deferring ours till May. And so, yeah, you know, we're, we're open to ideas of what people might want to see in a leadership summit. So, so, yeah, feel free to, to contact him if you're interested. And I'm actually going to just, I take the opportunity to, to just kind of reference that the county, so the county government. Is actually having something similar. Um, they're also calling it a climate-ready leadership summit. Um, it's not, it's not, unfortunately, it's not open to the public. Um, they hope to have about three hundred people, but it's going to be mostly county executives. Um, I'm sorry, county office departments and the county executive is going to be present. And the whole idea is to kind of kick off the importance of climate change. And bring that awareness and education about the county's climate action plan. Now, this is, I feel like this is an excellent opportunity for us at the, at PG CPS. To be able to share what we're doing in this space as well, because they are looking for key presenters. And uh, Board Member Boozer Struther, I will have to talk to you separately about that. So, um, so, yeah, so that's, that's coming and I'm, I'm hoping that we will um, be a part of that gathering as well. With the county. And I think that's in November is what I, is what I was told. So that was just a little extra. I didn't even ask for it, but I'm just putting it out there. Go ahead, James. Continue. You can continue.
Thank you, Director Morrison. And just, um, I'll point out yesterday when we were at uh, MSD. Uh, awaiting the award ceremony, uh, the folks behind us from Montgomery County Public Schools, I believe. I was them, uh, shared that they attended the meeting last year and how great it was. And, and just to say that we're really leaders in the state across, uh, you know, across Maryland. So, uh, you're, it's, it's a great. Uh, it's a great event and I think other districts are looking uh, to us to, and how they can improve. All right, uh, Operation Action Number Six. Uh, so curriculum, right? Uh, that's where Mr. Bell and I spend uh, most of our time is uh, teaching and learning. And so. This past school year, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, I'm going to go through what our committee, as Mr. Bell shared. There's several of us in, in a subcommittee working on this. And our overarching goal was to increase climate change and EJ into our curriculum documents. There were focus areas last school year. Those focus areas were the Schmidt Center. Uh, Howard B. Owen Science Center, the Science Office, the Social Studies Office, JA Finance. And the Health Office. And so all of those offices were targets uh, to increase the number of touchpoints and number of hours. That uh, those students and those classes interacted with climate change and EJ. And I should back up and say in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We established a baseline for climate change education and EJ. So last school year uh, was year one past that um, baseline information. So we targeted those offices, um. In the fall of twenty-four, uh, our committee presented at the Academic Programs Division Meeting. And then we also went out to department meetings, uh, which includes CNI. Uh, Specialty Programs, Early Learning, CTE. And we presented there what we were trying to do with um, climate change education and EJ. Uh, after those meetings occurred, we began to offer office hours. We started working with individual offices. We, of course, were working with those focus areas, but other offices were coming to us and saying, hey, we want to start some of the work now. Um, and so we had office hours over the winter. And we would go in and support individual offices as needed. So if somebody said, hey, we've got this idea. We want to do this A, B, and C, but we're not sure how. So we would provide a lot of that support. Uh, from members on our team. And then uh, when we got to the end of the year. We did another audit to see uh, what the changes were uh, over the past year from our baseline data. So that's what I'll share next. So, great news. Um, we saw growth. And so in our content areas, our touchpoints increased. And so did the number of hours that students are engaged with climate change education and environmental justice. Uh, so we're growing. We're not uh, exactly where we want to be. We, there's a lot of room for growth still. Uh, but we're really excited about what we saw. And what I can say in those, those target areas. Like the Schmidt Center, like JA Finance. Um, we see fifth grade students, we be in the Schmidt Center and JA Finance sees seventh grade students. We see all of those students. So all fifth graders, all seventh graders are having those touchpoints in the science curriculum, social studies curriculum, health curriculum. Also, those students are being touched at multiple points in those curriculum uh, documents. And so that was really exciting for us to see. And of course, that's kind of driving some of this data. Um, so. That's what happened last year. And then we get to next steps for Priority One. Uh, so we are going to continue to be explicit about climate change and environmental justice education within our depart. And within our departments and our uh, different offices. Uh, we will be supporting the curriculum writers, right? They're doing a lot of that work uh, throughout the year and into the summer. Uh, and we're serving as advisors, uh, because they're not experts. Um, and so we can come in and give ideas and that support as needed. Uh, professional development for all staff. Uh, Mr. Bell spoke about this, but we will continue to offer professional development, uh, not only to teachers, but to all staff. Uh, but we are, you know, we are being targeting, we are targeting uh, those curriculum writers specifically uh, on some of our PD. Uh, office hours, we're working on that again. This year we'll office, offer office hours for folks to come in uh, and get that support. CTE, uh, they are going to continue to engage in climate change topics and bringing that into their education programming. Uh, partnerships, we're going to continue to grow those. Well, we just had a meeting at the Schmidt Center. Looking to foster the current partnerships we have and hopefully create additional uh, partnerships supporting climate change education. Uh, technology, provide opportunities for student access to technology that will allow them to explore climate topics. And promote uh, student action. And then as we shared. Uh, or as I shared earlier, prepare for that climate-ready leadership summit, the student and adult events, which will happen in April of twenty twenty-six. So I am going to send it over to Eco America.
Uh, thank you, James. Uh, my name is Brett Metoulis. Uh, as I said before, I'm with the organization Eco America. And we are one of the partners uh, that has been providing some of the training, the Climate Ambassador Training. So the mission of Eco America is to move society towards climate solutions. And we do this through a number of different ways, um, primarily through our partners. Uh, and we've partnered with various school districts uh, and other kind of school-focused organizations. Um, but Prince George's County Public Schools is definitely uh, among the top of our uh, school-based partners. Uh, and we really value uh, this partnership. Uh, could you advance? Thank you. Um, so like I said, the main way that we've been engaging with uh, PG County Schools so far. Is through our Climate Ambassador Training. Uh, this training equips the participants who take the training. Uh, with knowledge, hands-on experience and resources to speak and take action on climate change. We deliver this in several different ways, uh, live online, uh, on-demand online through our recorded modules. And then in a kind of hybrid uh, method. So you can see uh, the, a module that was recorded by Mr. Bell. Uh, as well, uh, there are some of the other contributors to uh, this training on the call. Uh, your wonderful students, uh, Michael, James, uh, Olivia, uh, and Maya uh, contributed to, to this training. Uh, as well. And uh, also uh, thanks to Ms. Novick uh, and Director Morrison for their contributions to this as well. Um, next slide please, please. So this is uh, Donald uh, alluded to this earlier, the, the kind of exciting news of what we achieved last year in the last school year. Uh, is that we actually conducted the two largest training events that Eco America has ever conducted. Uh, with PG County Schools. So first, it was a professional development training for the teachers that we did. Uh, in November of last year. And then we followed that up with an Earth Month uh, training for upper-level high school students. Uh, in April of this year. So in all, we trained uh, two hundred and thirty. Teachers completed the training and three hundred and sixteen students. So, you know, upwards nearly five hundred and fifty. Uh, members of the uh, PG County Schools uh, uh, community. Um, we, so there's obviously lots of interest here. Um, and we're excited about exploring this further uh, for the coming or for this school year that has just started. Uh, the opportunities uh, to, to repeat these and expand on them. Uh, and indeed, um, so, so the completed, that's how many people went through the training, the became ambassadors. You, there's a kind of voluntary um, joining of a community at the end of it. So everybody who has completed the training and become a certified uh, ambassador, they're certified that they've completed the training. They can join our uh, community of ambassadors that uh, stretches across the entire country. Uh, next slide, please. So I'll just give you a, a little taste of what uh, the training entails. Um, this slide has a lot of text on it. I'm not going to go into it in a whole bunch of detail. I think you can access the slides later and. And read these in depth. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things here. Uh, so the learning outcomes include understanding climate justice. Uh, becoming aware of climate solutions, uh, being able to communicate effectively on climate change. And also gaining confidence to take climate action. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the training covers five modules, uh, begins with climate basics. Uh, we don't assume that uh, anybody already has the foundations of climate change. Um, all of our uh, material is uh, science-based and research-backed. Um, we don't get heavily into the science. Uh, we focus more on the kind of uh, big picture uh, overview. In terms that everybody can unders- understand, no matter what their background or discipline is. Uh, in Module Two, we focus on uh, the impacts of climate change and uh, the injustices that arise around it. In Module Three, we have a really heavy focus on solutions, uh, both the big picture and also the local solutions. Uh, because we believe that you're not going to be able to uh, scare anybody into climate action. We really need to provide a positive uh, vision in terms of the benefits that arrive from, arise from climate solutions. Uh, and how we can uh, produce a, a more just and healthy uh, society uh, through implementing those solutions. Module Four then is a practical kind of skills-based module where the participants uh, begin developing their own personal effective climate message. And then finally, uh, we round out the training uh, with a focus on engagement and uh, making a difference as an ambassador. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so like I said, we, we deliver this in multiple ways. We did, for the professional development training in November, we delivered it uh, live. Uh, via Zoom. And then for the April session, we did it in a kind of hybrid way. Where um, what we did was we provided uh, high school teachers with a classroom facilitation guide. And they relied on uh, the recorded content in our uh, learning management system. Uh, to s- assign uh, homework for the students. And then they facilitated using the, the classroom facilitation guide, activities in the class to reinforce the learning. Uh, and um, uh, work with the students to uh, explore the, the topics uh, in much more detail. Um, I didn't include it in here. I should have added a slide to this. We have some new resources. Um, that uh, are kind of cross-disciplinary. Um, we have, uh, we call it the SCIT Kit. Uh, so it's something that engages uh, in the performing arts. Uh, and this is something we can explore in the coming year. Uh, of uh, how to model effective climate communication through uh, the use of performance. Um, and the next slide is the last slide that we have. Uh, as I said, at the end of the training, after uh, everyone receives their certificate that they've completed the training, they're invited to join. Uh, our online community, which has thousands of uh, trained ambassadors in it all across the country, across multiple uh, sectors. Um, there are lots of other teachers in it. There are lots of students in it. There's also uh, community leaders and uh, health professionals in here. Uh, so it's a really good um, uh, forum for networking uh, and connecting uh, with others who are doing this uh, similar kind of work. Um, so that is, uh, that's everything that I have uh, to present. Um, I don't know if I hand it off or we do questions or, or how that works, so.
We're gonna uh, go into the next presenter and I believe questions are at the end.
Okay, yeah, we could wait till the end. That's great. We could wait till the end. I did want to jump in before we start the next presentation on Bowie High School. I'm really pleased that uh, Board Member Robin Brown has joined us, uh, the Board Member for District Five. She represents Bowie High School and is here to uh, you know, watch this segment and, and cheer on. Uh, the students of Bowie High School. Um, Board Member Brown, are you able to come on for a moment to, to say hello before we get going?
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking for my glasses. Uh, I'm super excited. Um, thank you so much for everything, for the team, all that you all do. I think this is just such an important um, issue that we continuously need to address. My kids went to Camp Schmidt um, before COVID, so I'm like, thank God, you know, they were able to experience it. Um, but I know my, my kids now, they, they bug us because we don't have electric cars in the house. I'm like, well, I don't have electric money. So, um, this, that's just a joke, but you know, the curriculum does work. They have really followed through, whether it's as little as recycling, uh, making sure classrooms are, are equipped. Even starting from elementary school. So keep up the good work. My kids are now in high school. Um, but I just wanted to make sure I, I let you all know. I thank you for everything that you all do. And I'm super excited to see what my Bulldogs are doing. Um, and any support that you all need, of course, you all can also ask me as well. All right? Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, Board Member Brown. It's so great to have you with us. So, um, we can, we can now move forward. Thank you, Mr. Roberson.
Totally. What a great introduction for the Youth Climate Institute. And I'm sending it your way.
Great. Thank you for making time for me tonight. It is so good to be here and off the record, on the record, I know we're being recorded. I have to tell you, I've worked with so many school districts, districts across the nation. And you all are heads and tails. You are leading the pack across the nation, not just in Maryland. So kudos to this committee. So, um, tonight we're going to talk about the Youth Climate Institute. Before we get started, I must give great thanks to James Roberson and Donald Bell. Who from day one have been exemplary partners, always allowing us opportunities to work with students and teachers. Tonight, we also have two Bowie High School students that will be co-presenting with me. They're going to be covering our last slides on climate action student projects in your county, Glenda and Kiera. And they are under the guidance of Ms. Anisha Tong, who, if you don't know, she is incredible, a dynamo, a supernova. So let's go ahead and get started. So what is the Youth Climate Institute? This started, this was born during COVID. And it's a way for, for us as adults to show up for these students, provide programming that recognizes their voice as well as their activism. You know, in high schools, there's music and band and athletic recognition, but there's nothing across the nation that recognizes activism and as well as, you know, all the different types of climate action. So we are looking for ways to lift up students, teachers, and schools. So the biggest thing about the Youth Climate Institute, if we go to the next slide, is it is a program, it's a national program that did start in Maryland. We are now across the nation with forty-two chapters. And what's really cool about this program is it does align with the Kerwin Blueprint in terms of delivering college and career readiness and opportunities to learn about many green careers. Going to the next slide. We have a lot of perks for our chapter leaders at school. So, you know, they have access to resources, just like Brett was describing. If they are seeking National Board certification, they can dovetail YCI with that as well as Green School Certification. We also support our chapter leaders in fundraising if they need it for action projects. And just the reason we're all here tonight is because we know that we need to support the earth and, most importantly, our students. Next slide, please. So you're asking probably, well, who's in YCI? Well, take a look at PG County. You have six schools involved, and we're so thrilled. And as I mentioned, James has really helped us to make those connections with teachers in your district. If we go to the next slide, we are also nationwide, just adding Tennessee today. So every week this summer, it's been super exciting to add on another state. Next slide, please. In addition, we now also certify schools. And we also have some YCI chapters at nature centers and community centers. So we are following that certification program of gold, platinum, and diamond based on length of time that they have chapters open. Next slide, please. So what is this program, you're probably wondering, scratching your head? This is an extracurricular program. It happens after school. Some chapters run it hybrid, where they meet in person directly after school, some meet virtually. We do leave it up to the chapter leader to figure out which way to implement the program. So there's so much flexibility based on the student needs and the teacher needs. It's a one-year program where in the fall, students attend live workshops that are designed fresh each year with new faces, new voices, and new topics. They're also, they're recorded, so teachers and students can access them later, if that works best for their schedule. And then as they head into December and January, they begin to come together to brainstorm what type of collective climate action project do they want to work on? And so after that year, they become certified climate ambassadors. They receive a lapel pin and a digital badge for their resume and their LinkedIn. And at this point, a lot of students are like, well, what's next? Well, if they're really interested, they can become a certified climate ambassador with honors. But here, here's the real story here. When they do a capstone project, they receive compostable graduation cords. And yes, our students are motivated to do good works, but it is those cords alone, I think sometimes, that motivate the kids to start and complete the project. So, so exciting. And those are handmade by volunteers for the Youth Climate Institute. So we love that YCI provides opportunities to engage with students across the nation, to connect with industry experts, to become nationally certified, and really practicing those leadership skills. And a lot of our kids, anecdotally, I've seen a big jump with going to college and deciding to major in careers such as policy, sustainability, environmental science. It is so exciting. So if we could go to the next slide. And so we are always trying to help our busy teachers find what I call the easy button, where if there is already an existing green club or an environmental club, why not pair the two and certify all the kids in that environmental club through the vehicle of YCI? And that is proving to work out really well. And Anisha is pictured on here with a quote about how she's been so successful doing just that. Next slide, please. This year's live workshops are focusing, the trend or the theme is human health. And we're doing that by offering live talks on climate science, climate impact, solutions, climate justice, and the intersection with water quality and climate anxiety. So really excited to bring in a whole new set of speakers. Some are which are students, some are industry experts, and some are college professors. And then our next slide, please. As I mentioned, as James also reiterated, YCI is a great vehicle to connect with Green School Certification. So again, just like National Board Certification for teachers, Green Schools, YCI can help folks kind of double-dip and check those double boxes, which, which we love. For our next part of the presentation, I'm going to hand it over to Glenda and Kiera. Glenda, are you able to unmute? And Kiera, are you able to unmute?
Um, yes. Um, hello again. My name is Kiera. Um, could, uh, could you go to the next slide, please? Um, so, um, action projects that PG CPS is involved in, and, um, our club is trying, has been involved in or is trying to get involved in this year, are stream cleanups with the city of Bowie. Uh, last year, we, um, we attended the stream cleanup on behind the Giant on Annapolis Road, and were able to, you know, pick up a lot of trash and compose of that waste properly. Um, we're also, I'm looking forward to this year doing a fast fashion thrift store where we ask like students to donate clothes that they don't like want anymore, or like extra clothes that may not fit them anymore. And we can, um, give them out to like people in need and also, um, sell some to fundraise money for, um, our, our school's club. And also to, you know, conserve, to really like emphasize conservation because waste, especially in fashion, is a serious issue. Uh, could you go to the next slide, please? Okay, so our current activities in our club has been recycling distributions around the school. Last year, we distributed recycling bins to teachers that requested them in classrooms. And that is like, that's able to help our school recycle more, especially because those recycling bins weren't often as seen in classrooms as they are today, thanks to that. We also, um, like occasionally, and we are trying to more frequently do cleanups and community service both around our school and in our local community. We've done cleanups around our campus. We've also worked in our greenhouse. We've planted different plants, and we've sold them to the community to, again, fundraise for more activities during the school year. We, last, two years ago, we planted a tree near our school's football field, so that was really exciting. And we also like do educational and informative meetings with our members to, um, to learn more about climate change and make sure you stay aware of environmental issues. For our future activities, we're planning to do more sustainability drives at the fast fashion thrift store I mentioned earlier. Um, we're planning to do more group-wide projects, so like more team-involved, um, yearly environmental projects. We also plan to do school-wide info sessions to make sure that not just our club, but all of like the students and staff of our school are aware of environmental issues we face. And plans to partner more with school and local green or STEM organizations. For example, last year, we partnered with the Science National Honor Society in our school at a STEM expo where a green team got to do an exhibit talking about environmental science and conservation. Uh, could you go to the next slide, please? Uh, I'll, um, I'm not sure Glenda's.
I was, I'm sorry, I was having technical difficulties. But, um, I've always had a strong interest in helping to find ways to create a positive change and improve the environment. I've always seen different things that needed improving, but people weren't really doing things about it. So I wanted to be part of it, be able to help improve our surroundings. And YCI has given me an outlet to actively contribute to these efforts and make a difference in my community. Being part of this team, association, and club, I've been able to do so many things like clean up around our school. It's become a lot more cleaner and safer in general because animals are able to move around freely now because there's now trash or recycling in places they're not supposed to be. Also, as president of my school's chapter, I've also had the opportunity to inspire and involve others building a collective support system and environmental change and aid. I've, I've been able to help people realize what things needed, they would have wanted to help change in the environment, how they would have helped, and to actually help them go out into the environment and help.
And for, um, as what YCI means to me, as someone that wants to work in the environmental field one day and make an impact with career, I feel like YCI has given me a huge stepping stone in doing so. Through the YCI website, I was able to find a local environmental park that I currently volunteer at, and it's given me, given me more experience in the environmental field. And additionally, I'm currently planning on doing a year-long capstone project, connecting with my community and, you know, spreading that environmental consciousness and awareness. And like in my school and PG CPS schools in general. And then I've been able to meet like a lot of professionals, and it's kind of like informative sessions, about climate change, environmental work, and et cetera. So YCI has been a huge part in where I've come today.
Thank you both so much. I'm so glad that you could be here tonight. It, it means so much to hear from the students. I love you adults, but students, that's where it's at. So, and then our last slide is just contact information. If anyone has further questions or you want to check out our website, here we are. Thank you for having us.
Okay, I think we're up.
You're up.
All right. Hi again, Regina Spruill, Supervisor in the CTE Department, better known as Career and Technical Education. So I think before I talk about environmental, our Environmental Studies Program, I just want to make sure that people are aware that CTE is across Prince George's County. We're largely in the high schools. There's a bit of programs like Computer Science and some other things, Engineering that drop down to the middle schools and then down a little bit more to the elementary schools. But we're largely in high schools. We're college and career-ready. And so we promote opportunities, experiential opportunities for young people to get licensed and certified in fields that they've expressed interest as they start to begin their professional career. So we have about forty-eight programs divided into like twelve clusters. And so an example might be our health programs, which would be pharmacy tech, medical assistant, bio, health, biomedical science, and certified nursing assistant. So those are four different programs under the one cluster of health and bioscience. And so all of our programs kind of fall that way. So as it's most remain to the work that we're doing on this committee, then I want to focus on our Environmental Studies Program. So environmental agriculture, natural resource, that's the cluster. Within that cluster, there are actually two programs. And so one is animal science, which is housed at Gwyn Park High School. And the other is natural resources, so it's plant science, and that's housed at High Point and at Fairmont Heights. And so in those programs, that there's obviously built-in components where young people are learning about environmental justice, right? And that they're, they're understanding ways to better protect the environment and to look at the impacts of the climate. So one of the things we're doing across our department is looking at where climate change, like understanding of that and EJ are infused. And then the other is, as we start to write new curriculum, we're building that in. So I added interactive media production because that's one of the programs we just recently wrote this summer, the four courses in that program, and we rewrote three of them and made sure to infuse aspects of EJ into these programs. And so just so people know, interactive media production is, is graphic arts. And so our students come out, as all, nearly all of the CT students come out with license and certification. And interaction, interactive media production, also known as IMP, the students come out with a plethora of Adobe Suite certifications. And so integrating, right, environmental justice and that, and how we're using resources and how climate change is impacted is a big part of the work that we, that we do. Our office primarily, I always say our client is really the teacher, right? And in, in support of that, we work with the admin. And if we're doing good with our professional development, with our curriculum writing, with our facilities, as we build out specialized classrooms and labs, then the teacher is able to do a better job of supporting and training our, our students. So that's, that's how we have an impact. So I'm going to go to the next slide, if you would. Board Member Brown kind of led into my slide, so EV, right? We have an EV car that we are actually putting at Laurel High School. Laurel High School houses our auto tech program, which is also where Crossland, and in a smaller way, at non-traditional programs, North and South. But Laurel also has Autobody, and so they have both of those programs there. And so we're moving the EV car there. So the picture you see is a completed electric vehicle. So people know that diesel fuel is supposed to be ending, you know, in, in, is it 2031? Thereabout, right? The diesel fuel is supposedly coming to a close. Things change all the time. But what we are moving is to hybrid and to electrical vehicles. And so we have to train our young people that they're able to work on these kinds of cars. So this is a project that they're doing in both auto tech and Autobody, right? From sort of under the hood to the body and the composition, the structure of the program. So I wanted to also bring up the fact that we, we do disposal of oil because we do still do like, the students will do oil changes, tire rotations, things like that, brakes and what have you. And so we have a company that comes, and this is true for auto, but it's also true in like our culinary arts programs. And that we have a company that comes and in a sustainable way that comes and collects the oil that are at the schools from these programs, and we try to do it in a way that kind of suits our environment. So that's part of the work that we're doing, and we continue to sort of grow in that area. We're continuing to work with our partners like Mr. Roberson, Mr. Bell, and our business partners, who are actually part of our program advisory boards, as we keep moving in this direction. as we keep moving in this direction and train our students so that they better understand the impacts on climate and how to do a better job um on behalf of us all, right, around environmental justice. Mr. Roberson, I'm gonna pass it on.
All right. And I can take um the slide for Dr. Rawls uh for the Howard B. Owen Science Center. Um, hopefully everyone knows we have a phenomenal uh science center in the HBO and Science Center. And they have an amazing planetarium. And so one of the aspects of uh Priority One that the Science Center uh took on was, of course, incorporating climate into the programming that they offer there. And so they developed and found this planetarium show and film called Kira. Um, and it there's, there's uh in this film, it covers water conservation um issues. And I, not to the, no spoiler, no spoil- spoilers, but um these individuals struggle in a society where they're trying to get out this message about protecting the environment. And so I I won't say any more than that because this is actually a show that the students uh can participate in. Um, but it crosses not just science, but also multiple content areas. I had an opportunity to go to one of the pre-screenings last year. And you know, of course, there are scientific elements to it, but it also goes into the ethos and pathos of what is being communicated in the film. So it's cross-curricular uh in the message. And then we can go to the next slide. Um, the visit begins with the film, but then there are modules after the planetarium show that the school will select where they can engage in climate change data and visualizations. Um, they can look at collecting air quality data, artificial intelligence, and how does AI collect weather data? Uh, there's an arts integration uh module that they can select where they work on the climate quilt. Uh, and then they talk about the relevance and reliability of information. Um, and that's certainly something that uh our students will need to be equipped with moving forward. How how to evaluate the data sources and the reliability of the data that comes before them. Um, and then water conservation. And so they look at a combination of these topics, all connected with the film as part of their visit to the Owen Science Center. And so that is one of the ways that the Owen Science Center has uh incorporated climate change elements and topics into the programming. And this um this Kira platform and program is actually launching fully this year. And that's our update from the Owen Science Center.
That concludes the Priority One presentation from all partners.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Roberson and and all priority partners, uh Donald Bell. Um, for all of, you know, everything you covered in the first part of the the overview. Um, really, really excellent um uh information for us. So I'm sure there's going to be questions. So we can, we could take the slideshow down so we could see everyone on the screen. Um, I do want to start with a special shout out to Glenda and Kira for for being with us and for your great presentation. I'm so happy you took this opportunity to show off your great work and to join with your peers here who serve on the committee. Um, you are welcome to join the the conversation. I see you're still here. Um, so we can get going with questions. I don't see any hands up yet. Watching for them. I see Jamie Alston. And I do want to invite our student members, um Michael, Olivia, James, Maya. Certainly, please feel free to jump in with, even if you don't have questions, if you'd like to offer student reflections on how how this information resonates with you and your peers. So but we'll go ahead and go with Jamie first and then David Noto, please, please follow after Jamie's questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. Just wanted to say great presentation tonight. It was well uh put together and quite informative. And I too wanted to take a moment to um acknowledge our students' uh great job participating and affiliating with YCI. It's really awesome. And as you, I'm not sure if you noticed any um thing different when you entered in for the first day of school yesterday at Bowie High School. Uh, but we were uh fortunate to be able to get you some LED lighting. And as you consider your, uh thanks to the Empire Maryland Program, and as you consider your capstone project or something to add for your capstone project and any other offerings under YCI um as it relates to um reducing your greenhouse gas emissions, energy stewardship and so forth. Uh, please don't hesitate to reach out if I may be of support in that area. Also, there's building supervisor homes and um you've got uh Board Member Brown as well. So just wanted to say uh thanks for your participation. It's exciting. As Board Member Boozer Struthers indicated, to see you actively participating in all the great things you're doing.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alston. Uh, David?
Thanks. Um, so I I suppose this is a question uh from Mr. Bell and Mr. Roberson. The first que- question I had had to do with um, has there been any outreach to when you were talking about like uh planting trees and things like that, has there been any outreach to like the PG Master Gardeners? Um, and uh any interaction with them about possible opportunities for collaboration?
So one of the um, one of the areas that we 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 weren't able to include this earlier, uh but it is part of the training that is offered to teachers each year where climate does uh is incorporated into the content, but there's a greenhouse and garden uh workshop that's typically offered a few times a year, uh kind of, you know, either by the Science Office or the Schmidt Center or in between. Um, and as part of that greenhouse and garden workshop, the master gardeners are invited uh in the um Esther Mitchell, the Prince George's uh coordinator, director of the master gardeners has presented to our teachers for, I think, the last four or five years um a- as part of that, as well as some members of um DNR and and University of Maryland Extension uh to help increase opportunities for our teachers and students to um uh plant outside, but also utilize garden and greenhouse spaces.
That's good to know.
I will add to that that uh we have engaged other nonprofits to come onto school grounds to do tree planting. So one example would be Casey Trees, which is out of Washington DC. Um, and they've come on to uh at least a couple of our schools and done large tree plantings. And they kind of define large as, I believe, fifteen or twenty trees or more. And so I know one school put on like, you know, planted like thirty. Um, so we are looking at organizations that can do that. Because of the changes at the federal level, a lot of that money uh was coming from the Inflation Reduction Act and uh some of that's no longer there.
Great, thank you. Uh, Olivia, I I saw your hand up for a moment. Would you like to come on now?
Oh, yeah, I I accidentally lowered my hand. Sorry. So um I just wanted to say it's really nice to like hear about other things that are happening in programs and schools. So that was very nice.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. I mean, considering how much you you do. You have great programs that you're working on all the time. So we appreciate that. Um, I see um uh Ms. Ms. Mar, if you don't mind if I have um Kira go first?
I was, I was about to offer to defer to her.
Uh, hi. Uh, so my question was about the CTE program mentioned earlier, uh the Environmental and Agricultural Resources Program, if I recall correctly. Um, I was wondering if that um, like if it already exists like within other um like Prince George's County schools or if it's something new that's being implemented? Because um at my school, like I've never heard of that program being offered, but it sounds like interesting and like a good opportunity. So.
All right, is that me? So I believe I heard about the CTE Environmental Programs, that was your inquiry. So it's at, um Animal Science is at Gwyn Park and and we do have some chickens. We did have a a pig, but he's at the Conservation Society. Uh, Plant Science is at Fairmont Heights and High Point. So there are CTE programs in pretty much every high school. If you're in the southern part of the county, we have Crossland is our CTE hub, which houses a lot of our programs. It houses nineteen of our programs. And there's a uh hub being built in the north in Adelphi, but that's still, I think the projection is around twenty thirty-one. So it's hard to put everything at every school because these these programs take a lot of space, but every school has some opportunities. And then a lot of the schools do or will feed into one of the two hubs. All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Um, we're, I think we're hearing that uh students of Bowie High School might like to to hear more about how to expand some of these programs there. So we'll, we'll definitely follow up on on that interest. Um, so the next two uh questions, Timothy Meyer, followed by by Kate Wonderlich.
Uh, thank you very much. And it's more just a couple of observations because we cut, we covered so much ground in all of the terrific presentations. Um, I think it was Mr. Roberson who said something about professional development being offered for uh all all staff. That is a great thing that it's offered to all staff, but I just want to highlight that um I think sometimes there's things that slip through the cracks with the PG CPS Climate Change Action Plan on paper versus the way that it's actually implemented. Uh, and I wanted to specifically highlight focusing on building services and PG CPS vendors to actually make sure that they have proper training. And I'm using this as an example from my own school of the number of times that we've had the building services team just mow over native grasses or native plants and or we just had some trees that were butchered that were actually done in collaboration with Casey Trees. And um so there just seems to be this disconnect sometimes of how things actually function on the ground. Um, and we can't force every staff member to go through training, but um at least the building services team that helps take care of the grounds, there's a whole lot of environmental things um that a lot of times it seems it's not their fault. It just seems like they're not properly trained and equipped to deal with some of these issues. Um, also, we um backing up to, I I had forgotten to ask this quick. It didn't come to my head quickly enough before Director Matlock left. Uh, but I just want to raise it as something that we can maybe write down in the notes and put in the record. Um, I'd be curious from Director Matlock's experience if he talks to his colleagues who do a similar type of job in other LEAs around Maryland and whether or not they're going through similar challenges with the economics of the electric buses. Because there might be some, if there's, this is a widespread issue across many LEAs. Maybe there's some sort of statewide legislative solution that we can all put our heads together and brainstorm on. And for lack of a better way of putting it, I'm almost thinking Built Built to Learn Electric School Buses Edition where we can, you know, talk to Montgomery County, talk to Baltimore City, a couple of the other ones who have the largest delegations and see if there's something that we can maybe put on the legislative agenda going into next session in Annapolis.
Yeah, thank you. Before, the time's gonna run out, but I did want to give a chance for it seemed like Director Morrison was really hearing you on the training part of the the grounds, if you wanted to jump in on that as well as uh Mr. Roberson or Donald Bell.
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, just kind of speak on behalf of um Director Matlock. Um, I do know that um other directors do talk to um their peers in in other LEAs uh in terms of what they're doing. And there's a lot of comparing notes um that occur. Um, part of what we did in the Climate Leadership Summit is to encourage that kind of conversation as well. So there is that uh going on. Of course, there's always room to do more of it. And I also want to say that um the state specifically, the Maryland Energy Administration, has been trying to address uh some of the challenges we've been having with funds. So they've been very generous in um in awarding us uh various grants for electric school buses, solar, to capacity building. And with regards to the training, um this is one of the things we've talked about is including uh courses within, I don't know if you all are familiar with, um, I guess it's EDUTrina. There's some some mandatory training that we have to do every year. So one of the things we talked about is to have like a sustainability module. It's not here yet. It's probably gonna take a while to um to establish. We have to go through all the different hoops and all the red tapes to have it. But that's one of the things that we have been discussing is to have that training be part of EDUTrina. So I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you for all the answers and I'm always happy to continue the conversation with you too, Director Morrison, on that.
All right, thank you. Um, Kate?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for all of the presentations. They were great. I think all of the actions around recommendation one are so important and really the foundation of the implementation for the Climate Change Action Plan and PG CPS. So I appreciate all the work y'all are doing. My question was uh for Anne at YCI and um and also Kira and Glenda, if she's still here. I'm curious on um whether there's a model for middle school and elementary school kids and the um in the certification process and what Kira and um and Glenda might think about that in terms of like opportunities for mentorship.
Now, it looks like Anne had to depart. Um, so we'll follow, we'll certainly take that question and and get that to her.
Um, even though uh Anne has left the meeting, I think that's a really good idea. By mentorship, do you mean like high school students mentoring middle school students?
Yeah, middle school or elementary, yeah.
Uh, middle school and elementary. I I think that's um a great idea and like partnering with local middle and elementary schools is something um that like YCI could work towards in the future.
Great. I'm glad you're interested in that. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other questions this evening? Okay, not not seeing any. I just want to once again say my thanks to all of Team PG CPS who joined us and gave us more insights into your programs. I know this committee really values all of our curriculum divisions and the intersection here. And to see it highlight highlighted is is, you know, we just mean so much to us to see this progress and we're we're happy to hear the report that you're seeing that progress in the data that you're collecting. And we certainly know it's impacting the students. Um, I did, I was gonna let Anne also know, um, I was really thrilled to hear the Blueprint for Maryland's Future and Pillar Three. And and of course, our CTA program, CTE program for Pillar Three, College and Career Readiness. That intersection has always been incredibly important to me as I've looked at this as a Board of Education member and our responsibilities to the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. So I want to thank everyone for that. But I I see Beth Novick's hand going up, so I'll have Beth ask the last question and then I will do my part around closing out the meeting. So we'll have Beth and then we'll go from there.
Board Member Boozer Struthers, do you think you and I could stay with the C cap students um just for a minute after this meeting?
Oh, sure. I think I think we can stay in here and be not recording. Uh, Micah, uh, does that, are you okay with that?
Um, yes, I I believe I'll be able to stop the recording.
Um, yes, I, I believe I'll be able to stop the recording.
Okay, sure, we can do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we are now at adjournment. Um, the chair informs the public that the next virtual Climate Change Action Plan ad hoc committee, committee meeting will be held in October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at four thirty PM. And please continue to check the PG CPS Board webpage for more information and updates. And there being no further business, the time is now six twenty-five PM in the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Climate Change Action Plan ad hoc committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.